Maybe you could give me something in the chat letting me know that uh. I'm being heard well in the room or that I'm coming through, okay? I can move to AirPods if that would be a better situation. Audio is good. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and mute myself. Appreciate it.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. You can hear me?
Yes.
Great.
How was your trip?
We got in at two AM last night. Good times.
You don't look worse for the wear.
It is what it is.
Dog's okay?
I'm not, I'm not stuck in a car with three kids and a dog, so I feel much better now. You know what I mean? Well, no, it was good. It was a good trip. We, we, we had pretty good uh. I mean, there was a little bit of traffic coming out of Harrisburg, but for the most part, the turnpike was fine and then. Ohio and Indiana were fine too, so yeah.
You're safe.
Yep.
Good morning.
Same chair. Morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, November twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. We ask that we stand for a moment of silence followed by a pledge to the flag.
Let's allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Just reminding everyone that we are live streamed today and we've got Commissioner Douglas joining us from Indiana. So you're coming in clear. Uh, the first order of business today is the approval of minutes, the November sixth, twenty twenty four workshop meeting minutes and the November thirteenth, twenty twenty four legislative meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to, to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I will make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. Next up is the salary board meeting minutes for November thirteenth, twenty twenty four. I would entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. All right, executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Pies.
Good morning, commissioners. There were three executive sessions held since the last commissioner's meeting, so bear with me as I go through this. The first on November twenty first, the commissioners had an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the twenty twenty five budget, consideration on the purchase and lease of real property, county authorities and commissions, the county's designated tourism agency, and matters of personnel. In addition to the solicitor's office, finance, uh, and. Budget and finance director Christopher Davis was in attendance to discuss budget matters. The second on November twenty second, the commissioners had an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the twenty twenty five budget, county authorities and commissions, donations, the county's designated tourism agency, and matters of personnel. In addition to the solicitor's office, budget and finance director Christopher Davis was in attendance to discuss budget matters. Finally, the third on November twenty sixth, commissioners had an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the twenty twenty five budget. The general election, county authorities and commissions, consideration on the purchase and lease of real property, and matters of personnel. In addition, the solicitor's office, budget and finance director Christopher David Davis was in attendance to discuss budget matters.
Any questions for Mr. Pies? Hearing none. This is the first opportunity for directors and guests. And public participation, I'm sorry, public participation on agenda items only. Is there anybody that wishes to comment on agenda items only? Hearing none. Directors and guests, Denise? Good morning.
Um, just requesting a vote on items, salary board items A through D.
Are there any questions on the salary board items?
Just confirming that all of these salary board items are within the twenty twenty four budget amounts.
They are.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, and entertain a motion to accept the salary board items as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pries. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Personnel packet.
Um, there was two new adds, item forty four and forty five, and just requesting a vote on everything. That was um, not part of the prison from last session.
So I have notes here from one to twenty, twenty six through thirty, thirty two through thirty six, thirty nine through forty six, and fifty seven through seventy two.
Correct.
Do we have a motion to accept the personnel packet as reported?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Pries. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign? The ayes have it. I guess I have to do a little delay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Budget and finance, Mr. Davis.
Morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I'll uh, follow the order of the agenda here. Um, first, I have no changes to the investment report that was sent out yesterday. Um, if there are any questions on the investment report or any.
None for me.
There's also no changes to the purchase order packet. Um, that is ready for your approval.
Any questions on the purchase order packet for Mr. Davis? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to accept the personnel or the purchase order packet?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign? The ayes have it.
All right. Last, I have the uh, proposed twenty twenty five budget here. Um, I distributed the summary reports um, to you guys that I'll be reviewing here real quick for you. Um, overall, for the funds that are included in this calendar year budget process, it's an increase of ten million dollars, ten million, seven hundred twenty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars or three point eight two percent. Um, of that specifically, the general fund is up seven million, nine hundred seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars or three point six one percent. Um, you can see on page two, the various inter-fund transfers that are included in the budget, the fund, our human services, um, funds nine-one-one and solid waste. Um, those are up three point one eight percent in total. The biggest increase is the capital projects fund, and that is due to the addition of the broadband project, but that is done using on general fund dollars. Pages three and four are just the summary of the budget, um, by percentage of where the revenue comes from with the breakdown between taxes and our governmental, um, various other sources. Uh, page four is the breakdown of the expenses, um, how they go by type, such as salaries and benefits, materials and supplies, services, grants, and indirect costs, um, and debt service being a pay one. Page five, um, lists out the key general fund highlights I'll read through here. Um, uh, we, we spent a lot of time, as I mentioned, going through this budget, um, in order to close the gap between revenues and expenses. There is a one point five mil tax increase included for twenty twenty five. This is a twenty-one point eight percent increase from twenty twenty four. Um, just to note, the initial budget projections going into twenty twenty four projected a fifty-four million deficit for twenty twenty five. Through a combination of increasing revenue, debt restructuring, and cost-saving measures taken on by our county departments, this was able to be reduced to twenty-two point four million. Um, some other notes for what's included in here. Salary increases are included for all union contract employees for twenty twenty five as per the terms of their collective bargaining agreements and salary increases for non-union employees is again two point nine five percent. There were three full-time positions requested by the, by county departments for twenty twenty five that are included. Five positions were abolished, reducing overall, the overall cost of the budget. Three positions are not planned on being filled in twenty twenty five and have had their costs removed from the budget, both salary and benefits. Five hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred is included for the county guarantees on the Harrisburg incinerator debt for the terms of the Harrisburg recovery plan as a result of the refinancing in twenty twenty-three, which is down from a. Um, I believe over eight hundred thousand annually. Two million is included in the proposed budget to cover the ash disposal costs of the Harrisburg incinerator for twenty twenty-five. The total cost to the county for this obligation will be approximately nine point six million, um, in total. No funds are included to cover the county guarantee on the Harrisburg parking authority debt. The county guarantee has not been drawn upon since the one-one-twenty-two payment of this debt. Um, we have a two million dollar vacancy adjustment is included to reflect the salary and benefit savings achieved by holding positions vacant through the quarterly hiring window dates that are established annually. Um, and the initial budget request for the departments under the oversight of the courts was approximately fifty-two point nine million. Again, this year with the cooperation of the president judge, this amount was significantly reduced by two million dollars. Um, on page six there, you see the costs for the new positions that are included, um, and the costs of the positions that are being abolished. Uh, and page seven shows the current uh, real estate tax rates, uh, the proposed tax rate and the, you know, annual costs based on the one point five mil increase.
Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate uh, the outstanding work that you and your staff did over the past several months preparing this very inclusive budget. Uh, and I also want to state that this is a preliminary budget and uh, the board of commissioners can uh, review this budget over the next twenty-one days that's out there publicly and make any adjustments to that budget before the final budget comes in.
Correct.
I also want to thank voter registration, our quarter of deeds, uh, and the courts, as well as our prothonitary, uh, for taking steps to eliminate positions in, within the proposed budget from the initial date until now.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Davis, thank you for your efforts on uh, preparing the budget. This is uh, quite, quite the undertaking and also thank you for educating me as this is my first time going through the budget process. Um, and kind of seeing all the different, um, you know, challenges, but also just your uh, ability to explain historic perspective, future perspective, all that kind of stuff has been incredibly helpful. Um, I'm very thankful. Can you uh, just share one detail? Uh, I know, I believe in this budget, we're getting every employee to fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, are you able to tell, like, what is the amount that it's gonna cost to get every employee to fifteen dollars in our minimum wage?
Um, based on, you know, an, an analysis from a budget perspective, it's approximately eighty-two thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Not, not a big expense for something that I think is very worthwhile. So a, a budget doesn't start during budget season. It starts immediately, um, a- as soon as we take office and the idea of facing a fifty-four million dollar budget deficit was a, a real concern. Um, I know that the board has not raised taxes over the last eighteen, nineteen years, and I know that structurally, we've got to create revenue that comes in annually that has a compounding effect. So, uh, there. You know, the idea of what we were attempting to do through the budget was to reduce the amount of a tax increase based upon, you know, carefully looking line item by line item, figuring out ways to uh, backfill revenue. And then looking for other opportunities, uh, with hopefully some help from the state, which has occurred as well. There are a couple of things that I want to go through. The first one is the debt refinancing, which uh, saved us approximately ten million in twenty twenty-four, six point five million in twenty twenty-five. And I think it also allowed for new money to be able to take care of capital needs from the prison to the courts to uh, essential items that really need a real estate plan. Uh, we're also hoping to move forward with uh, a human services, uh, project that is going to change the way we do business in a person-centered level of care. Uh, we should not have people running around to multiple locations with different outcomes. They don't care where money's coming from. They want and need help, and we need to figure out a way to treat them with respect, treat them as a customer, and figure out a way to turn those individuals who seek service into the providers. So I'm really excited about that opportunity that lies in front of us. A lot of work remains to be done. Uh, also, we had a reduction in the general fund contribution to the nine-one-one, a center because of the legislature last year increasing funding a little bit. But I was just at the county commissioners conference, and again, the number one priority for county commissioners across the Commonwealth is nine-one-one funding and ensuring that those rates are consistent with what the costs are to be able to run and operate. There's no way we should be uh, shortchanging the first responders and making sure that when those calls go in, we have all the technology and capacity to be able to respond in a way that we all feel proud of. So that continues to be a major concern and the other two were uh. The continual lag of state participation in mental health and figuring out a way to be a partner. Uh, and then the last one is election reform and ensuring that we've got rules that are uniform for everybody. The law is clear, no more gray area. We just want clarity. And the ability to enforce those laws based upon, you know, them being very clear and ensuring that we're able to uh, all play by the same rules. Uh, we also saw increased efficiencies and rev- revenue through automation and e filings. I see Jean King's here today. I know she's been very helpful in trying to generate additional revenue for, from her offices, have been the row officers. Um, professionalizing and restructuring to be able to eliminate vacant positions, and I think this is really a sign for the future. I mean, we can no longer do business in the way that we've always done business. The idea that we're going to have frontline workers getting paid a low wage and having a large amount of those individuals, they just don't exist. We need to figure out a way to create some career paths and opportunities and ways to actually allow people to advance professionally. And uh, through a monetary incentive to be able to provide services. I don't know why we continue to take advantage of people that are helping people. Uh, that's a very difficult job, and unfortunately, they get paid very little. Uh, we should figure out a way to professionalize those levels of service as well as the administrative responsibilities, and I think that needs to be done department by department across county government. I think we've taken an active approach during times of high interest rates with your investment strategy. Every dollar that you make is one less dollar we need to have taxpayers pay. As uh, you've invested very wisely during times that we've had good rates. They are now creeping lower, so uh, you're even more important. To ensure that we are getting the best possible rates for, from our county concentration account at all times and doing it uh, with the availability and the confines of the law. Uh, potential sale, lease, buyback, we're gonna take a look at in uh, twenty twenty-six as a revenue generation opportunity. Uh, there are no funds budgeted again for the county guarantee, and this year we actually are no longer a guarantor on the C R C bonds in the uh, city of Harrisburg. Uh, savings through partnerships with the courts. I want to thank uh, uh, the president judge for again, figuring out a way to enhance revenue, which I think is up, and the ability to cut expenditures was very significant in this budget. And then uh, I, some of the things that we always miss, but I think are finally trending back in the right direction post-pandemic are the healthcare. And then some of the things that we always miss, but I think are finally trending back in the right direction post pandemic are the healthcare and pension costs. I mean, we have a pension that is about 99% funded, almost fully funded. We've always taken pride in the way that we've managed our pension fund with our pension board, and I think that we have been making strides to continue to move in a direction that is going to ensure that those dollars are there when folks who have worked their entire career are going to retire. So those things I think are positives. Challenges still out there? I mean, we're in a budget crisis, uncertainty in the federal level. I don't know what the future holds with Medicare and Medicaid and cuts to social security and what that means to folks who are extraordinarily challenged financially right now. So those are things that we I prefer to be at the table on rather than the menu. And I assure you that we will be actively engaged in those discussions. Next week I traveled to Sonoma to be able to be there on behalf of Pennsylvania counties. And I'm interested to bring back the perspective and the federal perspective from folks who are on the ground in DC. So any other questions by any other members?
Yes, I'd like to make a follow-up to your your comments and thank you. It's a very long list of things that are taking place. You mentioned the human service project, which will be a one-stop shop location in Swetera Township. And I ask that we keep the elected officials in Swetera Township in the loop at every step of the way as this will be beneficial to the county and future savings of over $20 million in the coming years. Having everything in one location instead of piecemeal as is currently happening.
And thanks to the fellow board members for realizing and supporting that vision. Any other questions for the good of the order? All right, we we don't need a vote today. This is just, or do we need a vote to place it on the table?
We don't need a vote. I just need a general direction from the board to place it on the table. Because this would be binder, the hard copy would be set out in the lobby. A PDF version would be put on the web for public inspection. It'll be out there for the 20-day inspection period and then the vote would occur on December 18th.
And I just want to reiterate that this is a proposed budget and not necessarily what the final budget will look like at that time.
We expect some changes to occur over the next 21 days. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Chris. Chief Thurts report, Mr. Pease.
Commissioners, I just need to make note of pulling two items off the agenda under matters requiring board action. Number 14 at the direction of the human service director's office and then number 38. That was an error in my office that was not ready for board consideration. That might be come up in the future, but needs to be removed. So 14 and 38.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pease? Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the exception of numbers 14 and 38, all matters requiring board action have been reviewed by the solicitor's office and approved for action.
Any questions for Mr. Owens? Are there any matters from one to 50 that need to be pulled out and or voted separately with the exception of the ones that Mr. Pease has already asked us to withdraw? Any items that need to be voted separately?
I have some that I need to be voted separately, but can I begin with just clarifying questions about a few? Because some of them I might not need to pull. Number 13, that's a state program, correct? And I do, is there a consultant involved in that process for the the Raze project?
There is not yet.
It's not anything to do with opioid remediation, correct?
No, it's a direct funding request from Department of Drug and Alcohol.
Understood. Okay, I'm good with that. Number 17, can I get the amount for that just for transparency purposes?
Yes. That amount is $25,575.
The same for 18?
$46,200.
Okay, great. For 24, and forgive my memory here, is this a prime care nurse or an independent nurse?
My understanding was it is a prime care nurse. I'm getting a nod from Controller Bateman.
Can I just add a question there to Commissioner?
Yeah.
I know we had a long discussion about MAT. This was, this came out of that discussion.
Okay.
Hold on one second. There was a a follow-up email sent from the warden clarifying the two grands.
The nature of that email or like, can you summarize? I'm not sure if I saw that.
Yep, hang on. Let me pull it up and then I'll read it. You start going through your next questions and I'll read it.
27, 27 and 28. I'm I'm understanding those are no cost, correct? Those are just presenter agreements, but there's no cost attached to those.
Correct.
Okay. 30 through 34, are these all, they're all local share municipal grants? Are these all new agreements or amendments in some capacity to old previous agreements?
Neither. In a way, they're they're old in the sense they've already been, the grants have already, awards have already been approved. These are ones that have particular stipulations attached to them and don't fit that kind of cookie cutter, for lack of a better term, agreement that the board had approved earlier in the year for those awards. So there might be stipulations as they are now allowed to come back for money for that project or a particular type of project in upcoming years.
Do you know the the number attached to 35 by chance?
So it's, there's no increase. There are certain rates that have been in place for a number of years. This is just to continue it from, it ends on February 8th of 2024. We'll continue it through 2025. I think this is maybe the third or fourth time the board has redented, but there's no change to rates.
That's fine. 41 through 48 is 2,000, the minimum? I would assume these are properties being purchased out of tax sale. If we don't know, that's fine. I can find out later. I'm just, I my guess would be that's the minimum.
I believe it is the minimum.
All right, that that's the extent of my question. I don't know if Controller Bateman has an update. I do have some things to pull, but I don't know if Controller Bateman has an update on the.
Yeah, so the email reads, and there was an attachment, but I'm going to read the email because I believe that summarizes it. So Marissa and Tana actually came up with this, this information. So the COSIP grant, which is the left side of the first page. Everything has come to fruition except for the highlighted bullet point, which is, hang on, I have to flip back and forth. Receive an additional $100,000 to support an MAT nurse to administer injections. $85,000 dedicated to an LPN. The remaining $15,000 will be split between medications, budget and emergency housing. And then it's, she goes on to say, we will need an addendum to complete the $85,000 specifically for transitioning inmates to work release to convert to supplicate. We will add for December prison board for vote for labor to draft the addendum if in agreement. Second attachment is a proposal. And then it says that also we will need, well, we will begin discussion with our oversight if we are sustaining the two reentry navigator positions when the grant ends on 9/30/2025. And Vivitrol grant, which is the right side of the first page, we will need to add an addendum with prime care to administer the Vivitrol. The grant payment for medications would not exceed 147,480 over two years or 73,740 yearly. We will also add this for a voting item for solicitor labor to draft in an agreement.
Thank you, Controller Bateman, for reading that. Can I just ask one point? At one point you said administer injections? I just wanted to make sure that was the terminology and not inductions, just because I know we had talked about the expense of injections.
Correct. On the attachment, it says a project period is from, this is just the Vivitrol, says project period from 10/1 to 9, 10/124 to 9/30/26. Activities include Vivitrol injections for eligible incarcerated individuals will provide approximately 60 injections per year. No other forms of MAT can be paid for through this grant. Individuals receiving Vivitrol under the grant are eligible for reentry planning per the grant application. The entire budget for this grant is dedicated to the purchase of Vivitrol. There are no other budget lines under this grant.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I knew we had had a very robust conversation, but we've, I feel like we've had a few different conversations about that and so they all kind of, I had led together. So Controller Bateman, thank you very much for for giving me that. I I would like to to pull number four to be voted on separately, number 12 to be voted on separately. And number 40 to be voted on separately.
So four, 12, 14, no, 412.
40.
40. Got it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve items one through 50, pulling 412 and 40 to be voted on separately as well as 14 and, I'm sorry, and 38 that were pulled. And I'd like to make a comment on.
Is there a second? Second art discussion.
Yeah, item 36, agreement between Dolphin County Treasurer and Middletown Borough for the appointment of county and the Office of County Treasurer as collector of real estate taxes. Want to say a thank you to Treasurer DeFrancesco and his team as well as the prior treasurer, Janice Creason for working with our municipalities and taking over the lion's share of this work. That's something that historically wasn't done and you continue to take on additional municipalities year after year with the same staffing. Could you be able at some point to provide us with an updated list of how many municipalities in Dolphin County are now going through your office to do the work that was previously done by the tax collectors?
I will have that for you this afternoon because we've just added two this year. So, well, technically one this year and one at the start of next year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye, aye? Any opposed? Same sign? The ayes have it. Okay, is there a motion on items four, 12 and 40? I will make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I I just, I I take this opioid money incredibly seriously. We have people across this nation who have lost their life to being addicted to opioids and this is money that's been received in a settlement. And given the fact that the consultant working on it clearly has multiple conflicts of interest in which I'm deeply concerned in every one of the contracts. But certainly the nature of this contract, given the reality that this money is earmarked to be used for specific purposes and a portion of it is going to pay this consultant. But then on top of it, I have no, I have no concerns for just for today recovery or for Hamilton Health Center. I think these are reputable entities, but but I have a tough time given past practices verifying that there's not things happening behind the scenes that are compromising this money and therefore I will not approve approve any opioid remediation grants until that agreement is terminated.
Appreciate your comments. I know that, go ahead, Commissioners. I know the board is made up of Dr. Erica Pinkney, Chuck Mizetti, Randy Jaeger, Danny Albert and our Drug and Alcohol Director, Kristen Varner. And their evaluation and ability to discern based upon the perspectives, the these grants have really been pretty impressive. So I'm always open to the discussions of RFPing or managing the process in a different way, but I feel very confident that not only are these grants going in a directed way in a way that was intended by the settlement, but also being reviewed by multiple perspectives, both behavioral health, cultural diversity and ensuring that providers are directing dollars in a way that are going to most benefit the the consumer. So I am not opposed to having a discussion about the process. But I don't think that the the these grants are in any way tainted or in in a bad light because of recent issues that have occurred, but I I respect where you're at and I'm willing to have a conversation about changing the process.
I have a question for the solicitors been properly reviewed and approved by the solicitor's office for today's agenda.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye? Any opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it? Former business. Commissioner Douglas, anything for former business? New business? I guess it would be appropriate under new business to talk about the RFP. Or were you hoping to do that under Commissioner Discussions in Action? I know we had a lengthy discussion yesterday. Be glad to defer to Commissioner Douglas if you want to take this one.
Sure. As I've stated since January 2nd, when I took my oath of office, I believe we need to RFP everything. Certainly our auto-renew contracts. That's not a reflection of the services we're being provided. It's just a reflection of past practices of auto-renew contracts that don't necessarily encourage our vendors to sharpen their pencils. And and I think, given the nature of our budget challenges and given the reality of what what I believe the government should be in the business of doing, which is creating competition to get the best deal. We are, my hope is that we can continue to RFP everything, but certainly starting with the things that are on auto-renews and things that have been around for decades. And, you know, honoring those relationships, but also recognizing that we want to test the market, get the best deal for the consumer. And we have now done that. We've posted, I believe this morning a request for proposal for our lobbying services. And and everyone is welcome to to offer a proposal on how they think they can provide us with government relations and lobbying here at the state level to further the priorities of Dolphin County at the state level. We know that we have quite a few priorities, even as you know, Commissioner Hartley talked about the challenges in human services, brings out up regularly in the funding structures and all that. There's, there's many, many things that we need to be engaged with our legislators at the state level about to ensure that the needs of Dolphin County are met. And so we're looking forward to reviewing those RFPs. And ultimately getting the best deal for the for the public and the best entity or individual that's going to to further the priorities of Dolphin County.
Anything else to add?
Yeah, I'd like to say that Commissioner Douglas's comments are a fair and accurate description of mine as well.
And I also sincerely know that we're probably our best advocate. So having the discussion and developing a strong strategy about priorities was both engaging and productive. So a definite move in the right direction. We have commissioners, discussion and actions. Anything else, Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, you know, I know we're we're slated to have an election meeting today, which didn't occur due to changes and not a need for for finalizing that because I guess it had already been finalized. My my question that I was going to pose in that election board meeting was when are we going to have our next election board meeting to discuss the change in location? And I was, I believe in early November assured that it would happen before the end of the year. I'm under the impression we only have three commissioner meetings remaining. So I just want to ensure that there's plenty of planning and timing and proper, you know, proper window of time for staff to be notified of whatever needs to take place to ensure that 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 happens. I don't know if we have a meeting already penciled in somewhere or if we're targeting a particular date, but I just wanted to request of our our, I guess, solicitor and our our chief clerk there, if there's possibly a date and if we do still plan for it to happen before the end of the year.
Commissioner, this is Vince. Yes, we're targeting December 11th. I had already talked to Director Spackman about that. So that is the. Uh, Commissioner, this is Vince. Yes, um, we're targeting December eleventh. I had already talked to Directors, Director Spackman about that, so that is the plan.
Appreciate it. That, that's, that's all I have.
Commissioner Breeze?
Yeah, I want to wish everyone out there a happy Thanksgiving to you and your families and, uh, looking forward to the holiday season. Everybody, uh, be safe if you're traveling and enjoy the time with your families.
Thank you, uh, for all of the hard work through the budget process and the continued work to keep, uh, residents first. Uh, I know this has been a, a different year, but I, you know, there's always opportunities i- in every challenge. And I think, uh, the idea of how we move forward, uh, will certainly define both this board and, and our character towards the best interest of the public. And I look forward, uh, to getting to work always and rolling up our sleeves and figuring out where we can draw circles versus barriers. So thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you. And, uh, at this point, I will open it up to public participation. I, it would not be a correct meeting unless I did not direct correspondence to Mr. P's, which there are none, but thank you for reminding me since there is none. Our public participation. And we are going to do three minutes today. It's noted on the door. And I think Vince will ensure that we are keeping to the time.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Tom Connolly, three forty-five North Harrisburg Street. Um, I, I realize you didn't take a vote on the budget, but, uh, I, I'm just going to stick with that in the three minutes is, it's a good idea. Um, ve- very concerned, very concerned. Uh, Cumberland County is going to raise their taxes, uh, four percent, which will put them at about two point six nine mils, um, for municipalities like Swatara, uh, which is almo- almost every, every municipality with the exception of Pidari and Middletown. Um, we're now at seven two-two with the, the six eight number and the, uh, point three five for the library. Um, we, we compete with others and you're our team. So, uh, all of a sudden now we have deficits after nineteen years and we just went through an election. We heard how great everything was. To me, this is an absolute collapse. Uh, it's not, it's not a four percent. It's not a couple of dollars. Um, in Swatara Township, uh, we've held the line. We actually were able to, to cut taxes. We lost eighty-two businesses through eminent domain, uh, with the, the, uh, eighty-three expansion. And we worked hard and I don't doubt that people are working hard, but I'm going to ask you to work harder over the next twenty-one days. Because any tax increase to put on the public now after the last year of finding out, um, that there has been, uh, auto-renew contracts to friends, um, things really haven't worked that well for the citizens. Um, you were elected, you're the new team. Um, people have faith in you that you can fix it. To come in now and talk about deficits and you haven't raised taxes for nineteen years, um, really isn't going to sit well with the public. And, um, thanking everybody for only limiting the tax increases is very insulting to people. Um, you know, and again, I don't doubt that there was hard work in this, but you need to figure out a way to make this work. Uh, it's absolutely insulting, um, to put that on the backs of taxpayers after finding out that the previous commissioners, current consultants have, have really reached into the, the cookie jar, the example that a Mr. Priest used, um, bo- borderline, um, you know, wrongdoings, ethics violations, all these things going on. And then the solution at the end of this performance that has gone on for years is to raise the taxes on the citizens of the county. Uh, not, not a good idea. So I'm going to say I have faith that in the twenty-one days you will figure something out and restore, uh, the public confidence in this board moving forward. And, um, on the, the, the one shop, uh, Health and Human Services, I'm starting to get information on that. It sounds like a great idea. Swatara Township is willing to be a partner in any way we can to help you save money going forward. But we want it to be a fair partnership. We have a lot of county services already. Uh, I've said this before and I'm going to wrap it up on this. I don't think we've been treated fairly on the hotel tax. Uh, we'd like to see that revamped. We have the hotels, money's generated. We'd like to see a share for public safety. That public safety is also your public safety for the entities you have there. And, um, you know, fair is fair. We're, we're willing to work with you and, and we hope to see good results for, for the county Swatara Township, uh, moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Good morning, Ono Asai, Swatara Township. Um, a few things, just real quick on the budget. Um, I actually disagree with my friend Tom Connolly back there. Um, I think that it might actually, we might actually need to increase taxes. You hate to say it. I'm a, you know, I'm going to pay more. Um, but I think it needs to happen. The thing I'm concerned about is that we already have like a high millage rate in the county and the fact that there hasn't been a property reassessment. If one were to be triggered, how much would I be paying then? Like if I'm only paying forty-three percent of what I would be paying if my property was assessed correctly, if that were to happen and we've raised this millage rate, we could actually put me in an even worse position. And I would actually implore upon the county to consider, um, putting forward legislation that, um, like a lot of other counties do that has regular, every couple of years reassessments, uh, to avoid this position and to keep increasing revenue at the same rate as like our property values and everything else increases. Because I didn't go to a special smart school, but it is just math. And I think that we're actually, by not doing that sooner rather than later, trying to push the buck even further down the road, which is how we've gotten into this mess. And so I don't think we should do that. Think we need to invest in it going forward. Um, I want to thank you, uh, Commissioner Preece, because I do think that it is important to keep connections between Swatara Township and the county for this one-stop shop, which that I am happy. I live in Swatara Township. That it's going to be in our township. It's closer to the jail, which I also think is helpful. And, um, yeah, so just really hope that that happens and you work closely with the county. Um, and then I want to talk, uh, touch on the issues of what is looking like it, it's corruption, cronyism, whatever you want to call it. Um, that seems to be underlying. And I, I know this might be business as usual here and it might be business as usual elsewhere, but it, it shouldn't be happening. And what really, really caught my ear, um, was the money in contracts that was going for whole home repairs. Thirty-five hundred dollars per, um, thirty, uh, projects under thirty thousand dollars to muster and, uh, seventy-five hundred dollars for projects over thirty thousand dollars. And the reason it caught me is because like I worked on whole home repairs, getting that legislation passed on the ground organizing, um, to make that legislation happen and with making sure we got it for our county, reaching out to Commissioner Preece who immediately got on it and got us the money. And for the life of me, I can't figure out what this consultant would be doing that would grant that money going to them. And I am really, really concerned and it perked my ears as someone who knows a lot about how that program is supposed to work, that that is happening. And it makes me wonder that all these contracts are not just no-show contracts. Um, where someone's just getting paid and we're not just attaching consultants to everything and they're making money where they actually don't have to do anything. Um, it's very concerning to me that that's what's happening with funding that we worked hard for to get for the people of Dolphin County. Um, and so, uh, one, just, I'm going to make it quick, but we also just saw yesterday an article in the news about, um, steel and what looks like also no-show contracts to the tune of one million dollars a year. So this is trickling down, not just from the county, but it seems that in other places like the Borough Steel Inn, um, there is also these, the contracts showing up and there is a record and a pattern there and we should look at who's worked in Steel Inn and has relationships and ties with these people, um, for those patterns and practices that we see happening.
Thank you.
What can we comment? Follow up, um, as far as the whole home repairs, um, I have to give you credit. Uh, you did reach out to me when, when X was formerly Twitter. Uh, it was a, a random reach out about, uh, state legislation and funding that was out there. And I did contact George Connor from Economic Development. He immediately put in the application and we received two point eight million dollars. Uh, and he has also told me and our, our board in the past that the need out there, as I mentioned before, is so great that the applicants, we, we ran out of, of applications within four hours. Uh, so that's something, uh, that is beneficial. And if you hadn't brought it to my attention, I wouldn't have even known about it. And we were
I did it for free.
And we were close to the deadline, by the way, too. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning. Pam Parsons, City of Harrisburg. Um, I would like to note with, uh, the bonds and the bu- and the proposed budget that the city got thrown under the bus. Just as someone who lives in the city, just want to, just want to note that. Um, also, um, one quick pattern that I've noticed is that when, that oftentimes things that might have happened nefariously, maybe, if the outcome is good, we're willing to overlook how it happened. For instance, I read, oh, don't criticize Carl Hoffman, who used to own Prime Care because he did great things, contributed a lot of money to programs in Harrisburg. Bring that all the way to today. Let's not look too closely at the opioid remediation grants because they're doing great things. I have to tell you that it really upsets me, the amount of money that is being paid out in, in consulting fees for opioid remediation grants. This really, as we are sitting here on the eve of Thanksgiving, I'm thinking about the families who will have an empty seat at the table because those people are no longer here. And I think it is our duty as a county to make sure that as much of that money as possible goes directly to the people who have suffered the most. And in light of that, um, I would like to read you some names. I am not quite finished compiling my list because it is difficult. Um, but I went back to spring of twenty twenty-one when, um, Jeff Haste got the consulting contract with the NRA. And I have been looking at all the gun violence since that date. And there's not an easy way to do it. I can only sort it by state, which is there's over two thousand. And then I have to just scroll through it and find the municipalities that are in Dolphin County. So there is around two hundred and ten incidents of gun violence in Dolphin County since May of twenty twenty-one to yesterday. And so these are families. These are the names of people who will not be sitting at the Thanksgiving table tomorrow. Frank Berryman Jr., Josue Suarez, Amari McFadden Soy, Daniel Maledano, Torre Eden, Willie Albert Ford, Dwayne Brown, Christian Watt, Tamisha Miller, Dominic Jackson, Zontine Jackson, Tyrone Perrin, Kendrell Hall, Paul Kathouf, Azar Hughes, Naraya Wright, Antoine Byers Jr., Thomas Davenport, Ridge Moore Jr. and Darius Sukes. I'm off those, thinking about all the folks who've died at Dolphin County Prison since, uh, twenty nineteen, who also will be, will be an empty place at that table. No one is ever getting released to sit at that Thanksgiving table again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? All right. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, getting adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, y'all.